Number forty-four will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Press Pro Dorn, we lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This afternoon, council is grateful to have Pastor Michael Young from the City of Grace here to pray with us. Pastor, welcome back to council, sir.
My name is President, meeting the council members. Honored once again to have the opportunity to stand before your presence. And we're coming off of a week that has been highlighted by tremendous amount of division and divisive, not just political, but even moral rhetoric. And tonight, we're gathered here to not just pray over this council meeting, but to pray over Public Safety Week. And I think it is an opportunity, coming off of a great deal of division, to focus on unity. Because public safety is something that should be every citizen of this great city's right. Doesn't matter if you're black, white, rich, poor, young, old. About three thousand years ago, there was a king named David who tells us in Psalms one twenty-two, he said, "To the citizens of his city that you should pray for the peace of Jerusalem." And tonight, I want to call upon the spirit of what David called for. And we want to pray for the peace of this great city, Columbus. Prayer is a powerful thing. God said, "If my people, who are called by my name, would humble themselves and pray and seek his face, turn from our wicked ways," Mr. President. He said, "Then he would hear from heaven on high, he would forgive sins, and he would heal our land." And what we ask for tonight is peace and healing in this great land. Let us pray. Father, as we come before your presence tonight, first and foremost, we give you thanks for who you are and what you do. Our testimony is simple tonight, God. You're good, you're kind, you're loving, you're patient, you're merciful, you're benevolent. And Father, you happen to be all those things towards each and every one of us. And what we ask for tonight, Lord God, is we ask not just for your presence to be in this council meeting, but we ask for your presence like never before to be in the city of Columbus. Not just around two seventy, not just up and down, seventy-one north and south, not just going east and west on seventy, God, but I pray that you would penetrate every heart and every home in this city. And I pray that you would begin to fill those hearts with your love, with your joy. And most importantly, especially this week, God, with your peace. For you said that if we would keep our mind stayed on you, you would keep us in perfect peace. You said, "We should be anxious for nothing, but in everything with prayer and supplication, make our requests known to you." And you said, "The peace of God that passes all understanding would comfort and rule our hearts." Father, we pray tonight, Lord God, that there would be unity in our hearts for that one matter, not about politics, but about the peace of our people. God, we love you, we praise you, and we ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akar, Dorance Green, Remy Weich, President Harden. Any person who takes any action to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code twenty-three seventeen point one-two. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code twenty-three eleven point two-one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to move to the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akar, Dorance Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications we ran to the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go around the dais for announcements and resolutions from my colleagues, starting with Councilmember Banks.
Thank you, President Harden. Just a couple of announcements this evening. Just as a reminder, in honor of Sickle Sail Awareness Month, which is the month of September, we have coordinated several blood drives in partnership with the Red Cross. I actually just gave today, and I am fine. I'm not going to pass out or anything like that. So I know there are some folks out there that may be scared of needles or scared of giving blood, but I just remind us that when it comes to our blood supply, we are the supply chain. So please, if you take a moment to give blood this month, if you can't give it, our blood drives that we have coordinated, you can contact your nearest Red Cross as well as other blood donor organizations as well to give to them. Tomorrow, blood drive is going to be September sixteenth at CO triple A, that's three seven seven six South High Street, from nine AM to three PM. When you go to the Red Cross's website, you can use keyword CO triple A. And then our final blood, public blood drive will be September twenty-fourth at our Columbus Public Health at two forty Parsons Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, four three two one five, ten AM to four PM. And you can use the keyword CPH for that particular blood drive. And again, whether you give with us or you give on your own, please give out and give blood at some point. It does save a life. Next, I just want to make an announcement about our hearing tomorrow. At five thirty PM, I will be chairing a hearing to discuss the proposed amendments to Columbus City Code that would create a local rental registry of all residential rental properties within corporate limits of the city. A rental registry is a publicly maintained database that lists all rental properties in a city. Rental registries offer an administratively straightforward and proactive way of enforcing health and safety standards for our residents. The hearing, which will be the first of at least two, will present the framework of the proposal. So this is just the very beginning stages. Again, I want to thank publicly as well our Department of Development as well as Building and Zoning Services for all of their work behind the scenes to get us to this point. So we will be going through that proposal that they have put together. The deadline to sign up to speak and submit written testimony was at five PM today. However, as I mentioned earlier, there will be additional public comment opportunities as we continue to workshop the proposal and draft legislation. The meeting will be live streamed on the city's YouTube channels and council Facebook pages, and we look forward to the discussion. Thank you, Council President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Rosa de Padilla.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to start off by saying thank you to everyone who joined us for the kickoff to Latino Heritage Month, which actually officially kicks off today. So happy Latino Heritage Month to everyone. But we had the parade and the festival. We had a little over five hundred folks who joined us throughout the afternoon as part of the festival, celebrating all things local, so local acts, local vendors, local food trucks. So thank you for starting us off on a high note. We will end the month on October fourth with La Feria, which means the fair. And it will be a street fair featuring Latino artists and local vendors, and that will take place at Block Fort Downtown. So more information to come, but please make sure you save the date. Second invitation is for this, or actually, not this Sunday, but we don't have a council meeting in between, but on September twenty-eighth, we invite everyone to join us for our second Open Streets event. Open Streets is a national effort that puts people before cars. So we shut down the streets and everyone gets to play in the streets safely. So it's an opportunity for folks to come, and you can bike, you can come on a scooter, you can come on the Cota bus and join us right under Undercurrent, so at High and Gay Street Downtown. Last time around, we had opportunities for folks to, if you've never been on a scooter before, you can test drive it along that strip or one of our other mobility devices. We had fitness classes in the street, we had a rock climbing wall. This next time, we're going to have healthy cooking demonstrations and more things because the streets are made for everyone. So join us on the twenty-eighth, and then we will round out the series on October twenty-sixth with our biggest and best open streets that will extend from the Commons all the way to Gay Street. So more to come for that. And then lastly, this funding cycle of six one four beautiful ends on October sixth at five PM. Six one four beautiful is an opportunity for communities to create beautiful spaces in every portion and every neighborhood in Columbus. So you get up to fifteen thousand dollars that can go towards murals, pocket parks, placemaking, and more. You can look up six one four beautiful, you can Google it, you can see all of the projects. Up to this point, we've sponsored about twenty projects all across the city, so you can get your creative juices flowing, come together with your neighbors, and create a beautiful space. So we look forward to what you might come up with. So that is all for me, Council President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and it was a great time this weekend. Councilmember Beatty.
Thank you, Council President. I have one community event to speak about. First, I'll preface this with, you may have heard in the media, there were certain attacks on the safety and viability of downtown Columbus. But those of us in this room, we know that downtown is everyone's neighborhood. It is a safe and welcoming place. There are, I am personally a downtown resident, as well as Director Stevens, Director Roberts, and others, and we even moved our family down here. So there is a citizen-initiated celebration next weekend. The Downtown Residents Association of Columbus, also known as DRAC, will be hosting the Taste of Downtown this Saturday, September twentieth, from eleven AM to four PM. It is a celebration of our downtown restaurants, chefs, and community spirit. It is more than just a tasting, it's also, all the proceeds will go directly to DRAC's mission of ensuring a vibrant downtown by connecting members to, members to the local community. These downtown restaurants, some of them, most of them are small businesses, and several of them are the same businesses that were able to take advantage of our ground floor growth initiative. I encourage everyone to come out this Saturday and support downtown and support small businesses that make downtown a destination and a reflection of our city's culture. Enjoy a afternoon of great food, live music, community, and connection. You can find more information at Eventbrite. Thank you, Council President, that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember de Akar.
Nothing for me this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember, President Pro Tim. Thank you. Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Council President. Just one quick announcement. So September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and so to help raise awareness about childhood cancer and support research and honor the children and families that are affected by these conditions, we will be lighting up City Hall again this year, and we would like to invite all of you to join us for an illumination, which is taking place on Thursday, September twenty-fifth. It's being hosted in partnership with the Friends of Faith Prudent Foundation and Angel Works. And so if you would like to join us, you can join us here at City Hall from six to seven thirty. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President. Public Safety Week twenty twenty-five has officially kicked off. And yesterday, we had a very powerful sermon given by Pastor Young. And Pastor Rick would like to thank them at City of Grace and all the City of Grace family for welcoming us so warmly. Our amazing police and fire cadets canvassed more than five hundred homes yesterday distributing fire extinguishers and gun locks, while the risk reduction team installed smoke detectors. So a huge thank you to them, our cadets and our partners for their hard work in keeping our community safe. As we continue throughout the week, I encourage everyone to go to publicsafetyweek.com for reminders and details about upcoming events. Tomorrow, we're going to have our community conversation and dinner with First Assistant Chief Potts, myself, and County Prosecutor Shayla Faber. And we're looking forward to our Black Party on Thursday at Barnett Rec Center from four to seven. There'll be lots of resources, even a couple of camels, and had to throw the animals in. But there'll be a lot of fun bounce houses and free food and resources for our community. And then we'll finish the week at Walnut Ridge High School, cleaning up the neighborhood, leaving it better than we found it with the community cleanup from one to three on Friday afternoon. So we hope to see you all there. We'll do a resolution in a moment, but thank you for, my colleagues for their support, and we're looking forward to a great week.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Weich.
Thank you, Council President. I have one resolution for this evening, and that is one ninety-nine X dash twenty twenty-five to rec. You can go back if you would like, Councilmember.
Well, you finish yours, Councilmember Weich, and we'll go back to Councilmember.
Sure, sounds good. How does this thrown elf up here? Anyway, to recognize and celebrate National Drive Electric Month twenty twenty-five in Columbus, Ohio. As I read this resolution, I'd like to invite Todd Williams and Al Stockard from Drive Electric Columbus to the podium. Drive Electric Columbus is an independent nonprofit grassroots organization that brings together central Ohio electric vehicle owners and enthusiasts. According to the twenty thirteen greenhouse gas inventory, transportation made up thirty-three point four percent of total emissions. Of that, sixty-five percent of total transportation emissions were from passenger vehicles. We know the battle to reduce the carbon footprint of the transportation sector is multi-pronged. We need it to be easier to get around on bus or a bike, but we know that option does not work for everyone. That's why making driving an electric vehicle a feasible option is so important. Sadly, on September thirtieth, the EV tax credit is coming to an end. The incentive program successfully increased the amount of clean passenger vehicles on the road by one point five million in the three years since its passage. In spite of that, in spite of that repeal, we will celebrate and recognize September twelfth through October twelfth as Drive Electric Month, taking the time to recognize the importance of moving away from fossil-fueled powered vehicles to ensure a healthy, sustainable future. We know that a lot of people have their reservations about making the switch because they don't know how to plan long drives or where to find chargers. Our peers over at Drive Electric Columbus are hosting an event this weekend to showcase these vehicles and connect people to current EV owners who can share resources and strategies to make the switch. Todd, Al, thank you both for being here. I'd like to give the floor to you.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Weich, and thank you to the Columbus City Council for this recognition. We're honored to accept this resolution on behalf of Drive Electric Columbus. My name is Todd Williams, as you said, and I'm joined here this evening by Al Stockard. We're both longstanding members of Drive Electric Columbus, which is grassroots, volunteer-driven group that works to educate, advocate, and connect people around electric vehicles. For us, National Drive Electric Month isn't just about showcasing the latest technology. It's about giving our neighbors the chance to learn what it's like to drive electric, ask questions, and see how it can fit into their lives. Columbus is a Midwest leader in clean transportation, and we're proud to stand alongside the city as that momentum grows. Every resident who takes the time to explore EVs, whether through an EV showcase, a conversation, or just curiosity, helps us move toward a healthier, more sustainable future. On behalf of Drive Electric Columbus, thank you again for your support and recognition. We warmly invite you and the community to join us for our National Drive Electric Month event on Saturday, September twentieth, from twelve to four PM at Jermaine Cadillac, that's forty-two hundred Morse Crossing. It's a chance to meet local EV drivers, see the cars up close, and experience firsthand what the future of transportation looks like. Thank you so much.
Thank you both for being here. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Councilmember, I would just say that I'm a new EV car owner, and it was scary at first to make that jump, and once you have it, it is very, very easy, very easy, and...
No plans to go back, right?
Never again, no.
Thank you.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akar, Dorance Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopt it. Thank you, Councilmember. The only announcement I have is, oh, I forgot, no, we have another resolution. We'll go back to Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Of course, I'm the one causing confusion, or either that or I must want attention. But I would like to call the Mideast Area Commissioners up and all of those for Mrs. Quay Barnes, but everybody come on up. Brian Steele with the, our FOP Presidents here as well, just wanted to have the opportunity to celebrate and officially designate this as Public Safety Week in twenty twenty-five. So thank you for coming up. Tonight, I am bringing forth ordinance two oh one X twenty twenty-five to recognize and designate Public Safety Week twenty twenty-five. So as I was saying a little bit ago, this is the third year that we've had the opportunity to do this. We started out in the Milo Grogan area, then we went to Linden, but the concept was to make sure that we had the opportunity to bring our first responders in close, up close to the neighbors and make sure that our residents had the opportunity to interact, build relationships, and create discussions in an atmosphere where we can all have conversations about how to keep our city safe. This year, we're focusing predominantly on our youth, and so we're very happy to have kids here from Walnut Ri, or kids tomorrow that will be involved from Walnut Ridge, have kids from Afrocentric, the, two of the major high schools in the area. But certainly, the conversation's open to anybody in the city of Columbus, because everybody that lives in the city of Columbus deserves to feel safe, no matter what zip code they come from. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Mrs. Quay Barnes. She is the Mideast Area's Commission Outreach Chair, longtime chair down there in the MAC, and just a major community advocate, so we're happy to have you here tonight. Mrs. Quay Barnes.
Well, thank you very much. It is an honor to be with you all, as it is every time I come down here. On behalf of our Chair Felicia Saunders, who couldn't be here tonight, thank you, Councilwoman Remy, and your team for organizing this event, and here are a few reasons why we are so grateful. The Mideast Commission is one of what we refer to as the Eastland, I'm sorry, the Eastside Coalition, which includes the Far East and Greater Southeast Commissions. I would like to recognize the Chairs of those organizations, Jennifer Chamberlain, Chair of the Far East Commission, and Angela Barnes, Char, Char, what's her name, of the Greater Southeast Area Commission. The Coalition has operated together for nearly five years, based on the understanding that developments affecting one commission will likely impact on the others as well. This event is being appreciated jointly on behalf of all three of us. Public Safety Week supports our key goal of safety for all of our residents, families, the elderly, and especially the youth. The MAC set a twenty twenty-four objective to engage the staff, administration, and students of all thirteen schools in our area. As of March of this year, we entered our thirteenth school. This achievement was possible thanks to support from people like Edie Smith Henry, who is the Attendance Specialist at Columbus City Schools. Edie began creative school-community programs at Walnut Ridge High School, which helped us connect positively and consistently with students and families. Later, these programs were recognized by and expanded to the other schools throughout the MAC by CCS's excellent Family Ambassador Program. As I often say, imitation is the best form of flattery, and Edie deserves all the compliments she gets. Would you all give her a hand, please? And some of these students will be present tomorrow night, as Councilwoman Remy says. We'd also like to thank City of Grace Church and its pastor, which gave a dynamic sermon yesterday. The church is located in our northeast more neighborhood, and for starting us off right by praising God. My Apple Watch noticed me that I had, notified me that I had completed thirty minutes of aerobic exercise before I went home due to his, due to his sermon. However, the benefit was totally but deliciously eliminated because I bought a rib dinner to raise money for the youth department. We also want to thank the City of Grace Church for supplying space for our community conversation and dinner tomorrow night, so wherever the pastor is, thank you very much. We want to thank Barnett Community Center for generously providing their space and wonderful staff for Thursday's Family Friendly Festival. Special thanks to Manager Ryan Hicks, who always says to me, "Sure, Ms. Barnes," whenever I ask him for support. So thank you, Barnett Community Center. Thank you, Officer Tolbert and Bruce Black from the Department of Neighborhoods for their efforts in organizing vendors and exhibitors that we know will result in a great, fun, and informative event. And as always, we like to thank Lynn Lacour, our Far East Neighborhood Prize Center Manager, who supports us all the time, all the time. And lastly, we want to extend our sincere appreciation to Caitlin Pittman and her team, the cadets, and all those people that work behind the scenes that we didn't see for your contributions, because they are truly valued. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian Steele. Have you come forth and represent your membership?
Council President, Members of Council, Safety Chair, just when I think I'm tough, I put on these glasses and they humble me, so. Councilmember Green, please, no laughing. Thank you so much for being invited this year to be part of this Safety Week, it means a lot. As the President of Capitol Police Lodge Number Nine, I represent nearly forty-five hundred men and women of law enforcement, including almost two thousand Columbus police officers. Public safety is not just a responsibility of law enforcement, it's a shared commitment between the officers, our city leaders, and the communities we serve. Partnering with city council, Public Safety Week is a visible reminder where we stand today. We stand together as council, as officers, FOP, and our community has never stood together as much as today, all trying to make it a safer community for all to live in. The FOP, not many still knows what the FOP is. We are a union, we are a labor organization, but our mission is twofold. We fight for the rights and protections of the officers in a collective bargaining agreement. We advocate to strengthen a bond between the officers and the community we serve, which is truly who we work for. Police officers don't just wear a badge, they have charitable hearts. Brian Steele does nothing compared to Wendell Tolbert over here, and I could speak for hours. The warmth of his heart, he comes to us every year and he says, "Here's a community project we want to give back." And all I say is, "Brother, what do you need?" And a round of applause, I wish we had a thousand just like you. We, we raise funds for families in need, we raise funds for our community, we've sent inner-city Girl Scouts to Disney World when they couldn't come up with the money. With Wendell's efforts, we've built basketball courts for children's in neighborhoods who couldn't afford a basketball court, and officers like Wendell said, "Every child deserves to be in a clean basketball court," and it's outstanding, and we will continue to do that. We serve with compassion, we serve with service, and we are going to continue to give back to our community. Law enforcement is more than just enforcing laws, it's serving our public, and we truly appreciate all the officers to do that, and thank you so much. We've never had more support in my time from this council, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Well, thank you to all of you that are participating this week and have really worked hard over the last few months to make this happen. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Ms. Caitlin Pittman for all of her, her work, her community engagement team that's helped lift her up, and also Nancy Prior Solley. All of you guys did wonderful work to make, ensure that we were able to do this successfully, and so we look forward to the rest of the week. With that, I'll ask of my, yes, Councilmember Rosa de Padilla.
I mean, I don't even know why you were about to ask anybody, first of all. To my Eastsiders, I'm so proud to have all of you here. Some of the best people come from the East Side, and I am that biased, East Side till I die. But I just wanted to second, first of all, Councilmember Remy, thank you for these efforts. I think, you know, when we talk about public safety, it truly is. I grew up in a neighborhood where, you know, if I went too high in a tree or passed my boundaries, Mrs. Gamble, our neighbor, called my mom, called her, or would walk the house over to tell my mom what I did or did not do, or the times when my sister skipped school and then kept me home from school, too, she was telling, right? And we live in a time where that's not always true anymore, where we don't always know our neighbors, we don't always know what's happening in our community, or people fear each other, or we fear our young people, right? And so I think Public Safety Week helps us have a community conversation so we can get back to the roots of really being our neighbors and really watching out for each other, not in a punitive way, but because we care about one another, because that's truly what makes a neighborhood. And, you know, it's one of the things that I love about living on the East Side. I live in the neighborhood that I grew up in, my kids live in the neighborhood that I grew up in, they are having the experiences that I had as a kid. You know, they have all of you to thank for that, the things that they see and they experience and feeling safe and getting some of the benefits are because you all have helped to build that all the way down this line. As I look at all the folks who are here today and representing, you know, from our school district to law enforcement to neighbors, to my fellow warrior from Eastmore High School, Officer Tolbert, I just want to say thank you, and I want to thank you for the work that you do, not only in this week, but the work that you do year-round to ensure that the East Side is always the best side.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? All right, with that, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akar, Dorance Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, that is all I have this evening.
Well, thank you, Councilmember. It was our pro-
It was apropos because it gave me more time to, to do this, or to, to put off doing this, which is to celebrate, but I'm so sad because my, my friend, somebody who I sit next to in this council meeting, Ms. Michelle Boone, this is her last council meeting with us. I am so grateful for her service. I think back to her very first council meeting. It was in the middle of really tough conversations here at council. Council was being protested pretty tough that night, her first council meeting, and I looked over and I said, "Are you sure you made the right decision?" And she, she said yes, and she has been here. I would not let her go, other than she is proving that love still wins. She is chasing her new boo, and she is getting married. Her name is Michelle Boone right now, but it soon will be Michelle Barfield, so she is going to, down south, to marry her soon-to-be husband and leaving us. So council is so grateful for you, Michelle, we love you, we already miss you, I don't know who I'm a joke with now while I'm up here, but we're so, so excited for you. Will you help me celebrate, Ms. Michelle? I did that because I know she loves attention. No, she does not, she does not. Are there any comments from our elected officials' office, the city attorney, the auditor, the clerk's office? Where's my notes? Sorry about that. This is my marked agenda. Here we go. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance resolution from the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing now, may we have a motion to waive the readings of title of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading? Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the record the ordinance number of 30 legislation on tonight's agenda?
In Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinances 2304 and 2340-2025, Economic Development and Small and Minority Business, ordinances 2353-2025, Public Service and Transportation, ordinance 2344-2025, Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance 2317-2025, Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinances 2030, 2093, 2232, 2280, 2281, 2285, and 2345-2025, Housing, Homelessness and Building Committee, ordinances 2322 and 2404-2025, Rules and Policy Committee, we have ordinance 2320-2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any question or comments on the first reading portion of the agenda? We don't have any speakers, so the following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions of Expression, we have Resolution 200X, 197X, and 202X-2025. Finance and Governance Committee, we have resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance 1753, 1888, 2133, 2139, 2202, 2237, and 2302-2025, Economic Development and, I'm sorry, 22, I'm sorry, did I miss 2201? Sorry, 2201-2025, 2237, and 2302-2025. In Economic Development and Small and Minority Business, ordinances 2265, 2323, 2354, and Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution 172, 185, and 191X-2025, Resol, I'm sorry, ordinance 2049, 2056, 2167, 2168, 2212, 2235, and 2264-2025. Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee, Reso, I'm sorry, ordinances 1951 and 2319-2025. Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee, ordinance 2099-2025. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinance 2350-2025. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinance 2148, 2149, 2276, 2293, 2294, 2445-2025. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinance 1696, 1917, 2010, 2013, 2069, 2184, 2185, 2197, 2251, 2268, 2272, 2299, 2332, and 2347-2025. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinance 2159, 2206, 2257, 2270, 2321, 2325, 2337, 2338, 2448, 2450, and 2457-2025. Rules and Policy Committee, we have appointments from the Mayor, A133-2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? There are no speakers on the consent portion of the agenda, so may I have a motion to approve these items as an added consent? Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Banks.
Yes, but the exception of ordinance 2445-2025, from which I'm abstaining.
Borosa de Padilla. Beatty. De Akauer. Dorns. Green. Remy. Weiss. President Harden.
Yes, consent agenda passed with a noted exceptions. We'll now proceed with the reading, second reading of 30-day postponed emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance and Governance Committee, chaired by Councilmember Banks and Councilmember Borosa.
Thank you, Council President. First up in the Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinance 2200-2025 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of the Direct, Department of Technology and various city agencies to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement with Brown Enterprise Solutions LLC and Law and Order Technology LLC for the procurement of computers and computer-related products, to appropriate $1 million within the income tax set-aside sub-fund, and to authorize an expenditure from the income tax set-aside sub-fund and the Department of Technology Information Services Operating Fund. This ordinance authorizes the annual computer purchase for the city's general fund agencies. Desktop computers, printers, servers, et cetera, are all replaced regularly as they become outdated and/or obsolete. Replacement of this equipment is vital to the continued efficiencies of city agencies. These purchases will be made from a pre-established universal term contract and purchase agreement. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Banks, Timber, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2330-2025 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract with Byers Minton and Associates LLC for a consulting services contract related to state government relations to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code, Chapter 329, to authorize expenditure of $60,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes a contract with Byers Minton's LLC. Byers Minton serves as consultant to the city and provides state of Ohio government relations. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Wait, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, does the scope of that representation, who is the firm representing? Are they representing the entire city, or just the city council, or is the scope of their representation across all city departments?
Yes, Councilmember, that's a great question. Yes, they are our consultant at the State for all departments and agencies, even us as a, as a body and council as well.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2421-2025 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $55,460,000 for health, safety, and infrastructure-related projects to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $4 million from the debt retirement fund for cost of issuance and to declare an emergency. This ordinance, along with the following eight companion ordinances, grant authority for the city to issue bonds in connection with the 2024 and 2025 capital improvements budgets. In total, these nine bond sales ordinances seek authority for the issuance of $350 million in municipal bonds. Now, these bond issuances maximize infrastructure investment by the city and are paid by the 25% set-aside from tax, city, income tax collection. This ordinance seeks authority to issue $55,460,000 in unlimited tax bonds related to health, safety, and infrastructure. Before I move for passage and read the other companion pieces, I would just be remiss, we today were on call, well, today and tomorrow, with the three credit rating agencies, and I just want to say how proud I am of the work that we have done as a city with, under the leadership of our auditor, our finance department, and all of the other directors, as well as our enterprise fund director over in Columbus Water and Power. I mean, when we talk about the scale and the scope of these investments, I think sometimes we're sowing the weeds, and we drive down that street and we see the improvement, but when you really scale out and see the context of the investments that we are making, not just for the city of today, but for the city of tomorrow, and quite frankly, for the region, we are leading the way. And we continue to be the only big city our size that has a AAA bond rating, and it's because of setting that 25% set, of, of income tax set-aside, it's because of fiscal and prudent policies that we adhere to. And so I just wanted to pause there and say, we talk about these things, and sometimes we gloss over them because they're big numbers, and it's just things that we do every day, but this is the stuff that you really touch and feel. And not only that, it is because of you, the voters of Columbus, why we have the ability to issue these types of debt and pay for it over time. And so we will be going to the voters yet again, this year in November, asking for $1.9 billion across five different clauses, those are issues five through nine, asking you to continue to give us the authority to go out and issue debt so that we can continue to build for our future. And it is so critical, because it gives us a lower rating, borrowing rate, that we're able to do more projects for less money, and so it's so critical to have your support for that. And so I would encourage voters, please educate yourselves, look at those bond issuances, everything from health and safety, to historic $500 million for affordable housing, which we desperately need in our community, and to, of course, continue to invest in clean, safe drinking water. It is the number-one asset that we have in our region. So again, on November, we ask you to consider, yeah, issues five through nine. By voting yes, it gives you, you're giving us the authority to borrow that money without raising taxes, so to make all these investments without raising your taxes. So I just wanted to make sure I made that clarifying point before I move for passage, Council President. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage of ordinance 2421-2025.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And again, the next eight ordinances are a part of that upcoming bond sale. Next is ordinance 2422-2025 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed $51,535,000 for recreation and parks-related projects and to declare an emergency. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Next is ordinance 2423-2025 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed $72,225,000 for public service-related projects and to declare an emergency. And seeing no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Next is ordinance 2424-2025 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed $37,120,000 from four neighborhood development-related projects and to declare an emergency. Seeing no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
And last but not least, it's 2425-2025 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed $50,515,000 for public utility-related projects and to declare an emergency. Seeing no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Next is ordinance 2426-2025 to authorize the issuance of, of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $57,310,000 for economic and community development-related projects and to declare an emergency. Just a point of clarification here for our residents, that unlimited that we just passed, those are dollars that are backed by the voter authority. There are limited bonds that we are able to issue just as a city. All cities have the ability to issue debt up to a certain limit, so that is what these next corresponding ordinances are. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 2427-2025 to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $12,570,000 for construction management-related projects and to declare an emergency. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Next is ordinance 2428-2025 to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $1 million for fleet management-related projects and to declare an emergency. Seeing no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Next is ordinance 2429-2025 to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed $12,265,000 for information service-related projects and to declare an emergency. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 2430-2025 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax general obligation bonds in one or more series in an amount not to exceed $317,215,000 from the purpose of providing funds to refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city and to declare an emergency. This ordinance seeks authority to issue unlimited tax bonds in order to refund $317,215,000 in previously issued unlimited tax bonds. From time to time, the city will seek a bond refunding to capitalize on favorable market conditions. By refunding previously issued municipal debt, the city can reduce interest costs and, in some cases, reduce the time of maturity. This does not represent new debt, but rather a restructuring of existing debt to terms more favorable to the city. This is basically us refinancing debt that we have already previously issued because of the market conditions are different and we have more favorability. I think it's important to point out for folks, these are large amounts. This is paid, again, for overtime, and it's paid for by that, that income tax set-aside that we issue. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Next is ordinance 2431-2025 to authorize the issuance of limited tax general obligation bonds in one or more series in an amount not to exceed $71,480,000 for the purpose of providing funds to refund certain outstanding general obligation funds of the city and to declare an emergency. Similar to the previous ordinance, this ordinance seeks authority to issue limited tax bonds in order to refund $71,480,000 in previously issued limited tax bonds. Again, this does not represent new debt, but rather is a restructuring of existing debt on the terms, for, for terms that are more favorable to the city. Seeing any questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banks, Timber, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Next is ordinance 2458-2025 to authorize the issuance of limited tax bond anticipation notes in an amount not to exceed $11,610,000 for the purpose of financing the cost of constructing the Starling Street parking garage, to authorize the appropriation of $3,144,741.16 in the Columbus Downtown TIF Fund, to authorize the transfer of $3,144,741.16 from the Columbus Downtown TIF Fund to the Mobility Debt Retirement Fund, to authorize a transfer of $286,681.19 within the Mobility Debt Retirement Fund, to authorize the appropriation of unspent note proceeds in the Mobility Taxable Bonds Fund in an amount not to exceed $2,609,032.99, to authorize the transfer of unspent note proceeds in an amount not to exceed $2,609,032.99, from the Mobility Taxable Bond Fund to the Mobility Retirement Fund, to authorize an expenditure of $16,838,300 from the Mobility Enterprise Fund and Mobility Debt Retirement collectively and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the issuance of limited tax bonds anticip- This ordinance authorizes the issuance of limited tax bonds anticipation notes in an amount not to exceed a total of $11,610,000. I know there was a lot of movement of money there in that last title. This is to refund outstanding bond anticipation notes issued for the purposes of financing the cost of constructing the Starling Street Garage. This ordinance utilizes the same financing strategy as previously mentioned. So again, this is debt that has already been issued to build that new garage that will serve the peninsula, but we have more favorable terms, so we are refinancing that and moving things around for more favorable terms for the city. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Pass.
And with your permission, Council President, I will end the City Finance 101 portion of the agenda and move to the Economic Development and Minority, Small Minority Business Committee.
Please.
Thank you. Tonight in the Economic Development and Small Minority Business Committee, we have ordinance 2474-2025 to authorize an amendment to the first amended and restated Economic Development Agreement dated August 29, 2023, with North Market Development Authority, Inc. and NM Developer LLC to authorize an amendment to the Cooperative Agreement dated August 29, 2023, with the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority. To authorize the appropriation of funds within the income set aside, the income set aside sub-fund and the Development Taxable Bonds Fund, to authorize the transfer of cash between the Income Tax Set Aside Sub-Fund and the Development Taxable Bonds Fund, to authorize the expenditure within the Development Taxable Bonds Fund in an amount up to $13 million for the public improvements for the North Market Project, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to, to remit a portion of the Public Improvements Grant to the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority for the North Market Public Project pursuant to Cooperative Agreement and to declare an emergency. On July 24, 2023, Council passed ordinance 2135-2023, which established both an Economic Development Agreement with the North Market Development Authority and a Cooperative Agreement with the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority for the North Market Project. This ordinance authorizes the third and final public improvement grant that is, that is a portion of the city's approved overall commitment to the project. An emergency designation is requested, given some upcoming time-sensitive deadlines for this portion of the project. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. So I'll have my committees this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee coming before council is the Neighborhood Recreation and Parks Committee, chaired by Councilmember De Akawar. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. We have two items this evening. First, we have 2236-2025 to authorize the Director of the Recreation and Parks Department to execute a construction contribution and maintenance agreement with Adaptive Sports Connection in conjunction with the construction of a new building on leased land at Oceana Sea Reservoir to authorize a transfer of $500,000 between the General Fund Income Tax Set Aside Sub-Fund and the Recreation and Parks Bond Fund to authorize the appropriation of $500,000 in the Income Tax Set Aside Sub-Fund and Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund to authorize expenditure of $500,000 from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes a contribution agreement with Adaptive Sports Connection for the New Adventure and Wellness Center. The organization will be demolishing the existing facility on the site and building a new Adventure and Wellness Center that will enhance their ability to provide accessible boating experiences. Emergency designation is requested to ensure that the exterior construction can be complete prior to the 2025 winter season for the benefit of Adaptive Sports participants and the spring 2026 facility opening. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have 2377-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Neighborhoods to enter into a nonprofit service contract with the Center for Employment Opportunities Incorporated for litter abatement work, to authorize a transfer of $250,000 within the General Fund Citywide Account to the Department of Neighborhoods, to authorize a total expenditure of $450,000 from the Department of Neighborhoods General Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes a not-for-profit service contract with Center for Employment Opportunities Incorporated, also known as CEO, in the amount of $450,000. CEO is dedicated to providing immediate, effective, and comprehensive employment service to men and women recently released from incarceration, is a highly structured and tightly supervised program that helps participants regain the skills and confidence needed for successful transition to stable, productive lives. The Department of Neighborhoods and the Department of Public Service will work collaboratively to identify areas across Columbus where the CEO work crews will focus. City staff primarily provide these vital services, and this collaborative group enhances responsiveness by addressing urgent cleanup needs in real time, often within hours. Their flexibility allows them to support unique situations without disrupting city operations. This partnership strengthens service delivery, ensuring both planned and immediate needs are met efficiently for the benefit of the community. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. That's all in my committee this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee coming before council is the Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember President Protim Dorns. President Protim, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. First, we have ordinance 2380-2025 to approve the memorandum of understanding, number 2025-06, executed between the representatives of the city of Columbus and Communication Workers of America Local 4502, to amend Appendix B of the Collective Board Agreement dated April 24, 2023 through April 23, 2026, by creating and assigning pay to the therapeutic recreation assistant manager, food program manager, and food program specialist in the Department of Recreation and Parks and to declare an emergency. This legislation is to accept and approve an MOU between the city and our CWA Local 4502 that will create a new job classification in the Department of Recreation and Parks, including the therapeutic recreation assistant manager, food program manager, and food program specialist, and assigns pay ranges for those classifications. Emergency action is recommended to implement the terms of this MOU in a timely manner. Do my colleagues have any question, comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2383-2025 to approve a memorandum of understanding, number 2025-04, executed between the representatives of the city of Columbus and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Ohio Council 8, Local 1632, which creates the classification of utility maintenance trainee, pay range 19, in Columbus Water and Power, and declare an emergency. This legislation, again, is to accept and approve an MOU between the city and APSME Local 1632 that create a new job classification of utility maintenance trainee and assign pay range for said classification. As the previous piece of legislation, emergency action is recommended to implement the terms of the MOU in a timely manner. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. So I'll have my committees at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee coming before council is the Health and Human Services and Equity Committee, chaired by Councilmember Green. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight in our Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, we have one ordinance on second reading. It is ordinance 2260-2025 to authorize the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health for the Women, Infants, and Children, or WIC program, in the amount of $7,396,219 and any additional funds, to authorize the appropriation of $7,396,219 from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department Grants Fund, to authorize the city auditor to transfer appropriations between object classes and to declare an emergency. It's been a minute since I read like a long number like that. Getting back in the groove. Sorry. Columbus Public Health has been awarded a grant, as they are every year, from the Ohio Department of Health for the WIC program. This ordinance is needed to authorize the acceptance of the award and to appropriate $7,396,219 and any additional funds to this grant program for the period of August 1, 2025 through September 30 of 2026. The WIC program provides nutritionally healthy food and nutrition education to pregnant and lactane women, infants, and children that are identified as being at nutritional risk here in Franklin County or who meet categorical income and nutritional risk requirements for eligibility. This ordinance is submitted as an emergency, so a delay in services and rental contracts has not occurred due to the grant start date of October 1, 2025. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangs, Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all for me tonight, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee coming before council is the Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Weiss. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight in Public Utilities and Sustainability, we have three ordinances on second reading. First, I have 2122-2025 to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee, simple or in lesser, real estate necessary to timely complete the Sunbury Mock Home Sewage Treatment Systems Elimination Project and to authorize an expenditure of $5,334. This project is being, this property is being acquired to timely complete the project as mentioned. The project will improve and repair a certain public sewer infrastructure. Let me pause there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have 2186-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify the service contract with Negro Central LLC for the Parsons Avenue Water Plant Residuals Removal and Disposal Lagoon III Project and to authorize the expenditure of up to $12,379,583.30 from the Water Operating Fund. By removing disposing of waste materials currently being stored in Lagoon III, this project will add capacity to the storage of Lagoon to allow for additional materials removed during the drinking water purification process to be stored. Some of the materials will be, some of the materials being removed will be used as fertilizer or compost while some will be taken to the landfill for disposal. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And lastly, I have ordinance 2336-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a professional construction management services contract with the Ascension Construction Solutions LLC for the wastewater treatment facilities, professional contract management services, number four project, and the general architectural and mechanical services contract one, to authorize an amendment to the 2025 capital improvement budget, to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation within the sanitary bond fund, to authorize an expenditure of up to $1 million from the sanitary bond fund and to declare an emergency. Under the contract, Ascension LLP will, I'm sorry, LLC, will provide construction administration and management services for multiple projects. This contract has a four-year work assignment window and will end upon completion of any projects assigned during the four-year window. The department requested this ordinance passed with emergency designation because there are several current construction projects that require these vital services. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That is all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The final committee coming before council is the Housing, Home, and Assistant Building Committee. I chair that committee. The first piece of legislation we have tonight is ordinance 2303-2025 is to accept the application of Hank W. and Patricia Shrek and James E. and Karen L. Ruggles for the annexation of certain territory containing 14.07 plus or minus acres in Jackson Township. This annexation has already received approval by the county commissioners in June and is following Ohio procedures for annexation. This legislation is requested to be amended as an emergency to allow for construction to begin before winter weather commences and makes work difficult with inclement weather. So first, I request amend to emergency. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Now I move to, for passage as amended. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Pass. The next piece of legislation is ordinance 2348-2025 is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to establish contracts with various contractors for the lead safe services by the Division of Housing and to waive competitive bid requirements of the Columbus City Code to allow expenditures prior to the establishment of purchase orders back to and including March 1, 2025, to authorize the expenditure of $1,940,000 from the lead hazard, lead hazard reduction program and to declare an emergency. This program performs lead safe repairs and lead abatement using U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development-led safe guidelines. The Lead Safe Columbus Program receives funding through HUD through March 2029. There are nine awarded vendors that were selected out of 19 response received. This program addresses public health and property conditions, including the preservation of housing for residents and improvement of health for families. This program helps improve the property long-term by addressing the adverse impacts of lead. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Pass. The next piece of legislation is ordinance 2402-2025. This ordinance authorizes the expenditure of an amount up to $2 million of the Home Investment Partnership Program income funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It authorizes the Department of, Department of Development to enter into a commitment letter, loan agreement, promissory note, mortgage, and restrictive covenant with Aspire Columbus LLC in the amount of up to $2 million of program income for the Aspire Columbus Project and declare an emergency. This is an exciting project. It was born out of the former United Way Building on South Third Street in downtown Columbus in collaboration with the Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority. The Aspire Development is an 82-unit project developed by the CMHA and Moody Noley Companies. When complete, this mixed-income project will have 25% of its units serve residents at 50% area meeting income, 11 of its tenants making 30% area minimum income, and 12 units at market rate. This project will range from studio units to three-bedroom units able to serve families. 5% of the units will accommodate physical and visual auditory accessibility. With this location in the downtown neighborhood, this project will have access to many amenities such as green space, grocery stores, public transit, and more. The home funding comes from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This project is an example of collaboration among nonprofit partners, CMHA, and the city to deliver units downtown to serve residents at all price points. This is a really exciting project. I'm really excited for this to move forward. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Ordinance is passed. The next piece of legislation is ordinance 2449-2025 to amend ordinance number 2012-2025, passed by Columbus City Council on July 28, 2025, to revise the amount of the authorized grant to $2,761,076.15 to supply reasonable food and non-alcoholic beverages and to declare an emergency. This legislation will allow the city's new program, the Resilient Housing Initiative, to provide the range of services required to serve residents in a housing crisis. This program has come after the end of the federal pandemic emergency rental assistance program. The city's new program is meeting tenants in the moment when they are most at risk of entering homelessness. This often requires services to help stabilize tenants doubled up with family on a couch or surfing, or doing couch surfing to avoid entering shelter. This legislation also accompanies ordinance 2457-2025 on the consent agenda tonight, which awards $479,000 to seven nonprofit organizations to assist tenants in housing program solving and case management to avoid eviction and homelessness. These nonprofits include Columbus Literacy Council, Latin Community House, Compass, Home for Families, Jewish Family Services, St. Stevens Community House, and the YMCA. These nonprofits will be on the front line, working with tenants to determine their level of risk and qualification for the RHI program to receive housing stability services. With the end of the emergency rental assistance program, we know that we must do more to reach tenants at high risk of eviction and homelessness. We believe this program is the city's work to do this locally and in a targeted approach. But we know much more need is, needs to be done in the future to help tenants stabilize. So this is really important, two pieces of legislation that we passed, one passed earlier, but hopeful for the support of my colleagues. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Pass. Seeing no further business coming before council, is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar, Dorns, Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
The meeting is adjourned. We will take non-agenda speakers now.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Can I get a motion since we're reading into the Journal?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the Journal? Hearing none, the Journal is approved. We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Dorance chairs that committee. All members serve. When the council member of the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. As always, before we begin tonight's zoning agenda, allow me to briefly explain the rules pertaining to speaking for council on rezonings and variances. We only hear staff presentation of ordinance have a disapproval from recommending body or if we have a public speaker sign up to speak against an ordinance. We permit three speakers on each side of an ordinance, three proponents, three opponents. We ask that those speakers limit their remarks to three minutes per the standard real estate council. All speakers in the council variants, including the city staff, area commission, applicants, and members of the public will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives in the area commission are always able to speak on an ordinance and do not need to fill out a speaker slip. We do ask you, alert city staff, your intentions to speak at this committee hearing. This evening, we do not have any public speaker slips for this legislation. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we'll now swear in city staff. Please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear affirming this testimony about to give of the truth? Nothing but the truth, they usually answer to pay some penalty or perjury. If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Joseph Rose and the Department of Building and Zoning Services have been sworn in. First, we have ordinance 2278-2025 to rezone 1815 Woodland Avenue, being 2.31 acres located on the west side of Woodland Avenue, 331 plus north of Argyle Drive from R2 Residential District to LC4 Limited Commercial District. Site consists of an eastern portion of a parcel developed with religious facility, and the request of rezoning will allow for limited commercial uses, including event and assembly space uses. Propose those approvals from city staff, the development commission, and the North Central Area Commission. Don't make any questions or comments. Seeing none, I move a passage.
I did have a question. Do we have any information about what the future use is going to be? I understand limited commercial uses. Do we have any information about what the intention is?
Mr. Rose, is that in the application?
Sorry, say that again?
Is the proposed... I know that zoning district allows multiple different uses within that, but has the applicant identified which of those uses they're planning to utilize?
Yeah, so the uses that are really being outlined in this are going to be mostly for public gathering space, so weddings, graduations, things of that nature. That would already be pretty much part of that type of use.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2312-2025 to rezone 3355 Refugee Road, being 9.03 acres located on the south side of Refugee Road, 800 feet plus east of Winchester Pike from LC4 Limited Commercial District to AR1 Apartment Residential District. Site consists of one undeveloped parcel, the applicant requesting the rezoning to allow for post 220 unit affordable housing complex. Companion variants will be considered later on tonight's agenda. Propose those approvals from city staff, development commission, and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. I first move to accepting the entire step before undue evidence as exhibit.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And next, we move to adopt the five steps, the five steps of council.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard... I'm sorry, 3333.255 primary yard, according to city codes, property located at 3355 Refugee Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. Again, this is the companion variants, the rezoning we just passed. Requesting council variants propose a 220 unit affordable housing complex with reduced parking lot screening, require parking, building setback line, and primary yard. Propose those approvals from the city staff and the Mid East Area Commission. Any questions or comments for colleagues? Seeing none, I move a passage.
Please call the roll.
Banks, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro Dorn, Screen, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And now, we move on to that council variants, which is ordinance number 2313-2025 to grant a variance provision to section 3312.21d1 parking lot screening. 3312.49c require parking. 3333.18b building lines. And 3333.25 primary yard...